Meeting of Town Council to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we will deem the agenda as approved. There is a proclamation that -- so we don't really do the proclamations week by week anymore. They're posted online. But Purple Day is in recognition of epilepsy. And then at the council meeting on the 25th, there'll be purple ribbons given to council to wear in recognition of that. Are there any announcements from members of council of any upcoming events or anything? Counselor Thorburn?
Just down at the museum, Your Worship, March of 16, looking for Legion, three. To the Fourth, this area next week, another ukulele jam on March of 23rd, to the Fourth. And March, the serious, to the Fourth, Watercolor, and those are free.
Great. And there's been a few events held recently at the museum where the numbers have been great. Yep. And a reminder, as Counselor Thorburn said, that the museum is free. And so, a great time to wander down. Any other announcements from members of council? There is a free skate coming up. Is United Way putting on that free skate? Who's putting on the free skate? I can't remember. At the end of the month, I think there's one. It is the Legion, isn't it? Oh, Lions Club, sorry, yeah.
The bowling as well, of March break.
Yes. And there's March Break day camps within the community, and I think there's still room at the ones here. Counselor Thorburn? There's still room in the day camps at the Desperis? Okay. Any announcements?
One more.
One more, yes. Do you actually want to grab the microphone? Just so I grab the microphone.
I think the Bridgewater Legion and other legions around have got the ball already booked during March Break for the students to go there and bowl free. And I think I was on the 21st from one to four.
Okay. And that'll be posted, I'm sure, on social media as well as...
On the page and Facebook.
Great. Thank you. That's it for council announcements. And so we have a delegation. Yvonne is here. Yeah. So you're the Regional Collective for Canadian Lyme Disease Foundation. And do you want to come to the podium? You have 10 minutes to educate us.
It's going to be very short. So my name is Yvonne Mosley. I live in Lunenburg. And there are a small group, about 10 people, who have been implicated by Lyme disease. And we have come together under the auspices of the Canadian Lyme Disease Foundation. And the plan is that we will put on a conference in Bridgewater using Cineplex and Event Cinema, which will be a two-pronged approach. So one will be for healthcare professionals and the other for the general public. So the notion is that for -- we're calling the medical one Lyme SOS. We're hoping that we can find common ground for varying points of view within the medical research and professions and perhaps -- the word enlightened comes to mind, but it's not the right word, but maybe inform the medical community of varying points of view and various types of research. So you're probably aware that there is some contention in and amongst the way that Lyme disease is dealt with. So there is a video. I don't know who has it or where it is. But, okay. There it is. It's short. Just needs sound.
Lyme survive.
Could you take it to the beginning?
Can we rewind? Can you take it to the beginning again?
Make no mistake about it, Lyme disease is an epidemic in North America. And Lunenburg County is the epicenter.
I'm a hard- carrying Lyme survivor. And I'm not even respected in Lunenburg in terms of urgency.
Make no mistake about it, Lyme disease is an epidemic in North America. And Lunenburg County is the epicenter.
I was diagnosed with Lyme. The process to get that diagnosis was almost suicide.
When it comes to Lyme disease, there are more questions than answers. Why can dogs get a vaccine? And yet the human vaccine is pulled from the shelves. Can Lyme disease be transmitted sexually or through blood?
What does it look like? What diseases does it cause? It's critically important. We're just starting to understand. We're really not understanding. We're just starting to ask those questions.
I'm a dentist who worked here over the years. And I was a back friend of a little Lyme disease. And one of my colleagues, a senior through West Spring, if there are any technical authorities on Lyme disease, and I'm quite a much patient to the public.
And why do doctors misdiagnose them in a running way?
Because they were looking, testing for lupus, testing for chronic fatigue was the first. Then they seemed to settle on MNS. This must be MNS. That point, the disease became, it progressed to Walker. And then my experience gave me a ticket to the washroom. I could not balance on the toilet. It was then, now at March, that my doctor timely said, let's look at Lyme.
Nancy was fortunate that her tests came back positive. But there are many who get a false MNS.
I was feeling stiff. I was getting an AT vague kind of complaints. I noticed that my strength had dropped from the gym by about 65 percent. It looked in weights, and that's dramatic. I was just aging, and this sucks. The doctor said, okay, the test results everything. And I was the only person prepared for this, for testing for MNS, for this, for that. We've got none of the above. And I said, Lyme disease? Oh, aren't I Lyme disease? At that point, it was a threat. Why did you say that? Because you're just supposed to tell me that it's probably myalgia? At that point, we parted company. I saw help for me, and I went out to Lyme and realized that there was a heck of a bureaucracy behind this, didn't understand it all, but it didn't matter the cost. I mean, heck, I was going to get myself better, so I could keep on providing for the people. But what they can do there to me, what can they do with others?
The American test is four times as accurate, and yet we're still not using it. Why?
If they do all the tests, and it's none of the above, then this is what you're like with Lyme disease, because it mimics all the other diseases.
And had you had a Lyme test?
I had a Lyme tester, and of course, won't the Lyme test. At that point, the doctor is not allowed to go any further.
Is there a connection between clear-cutting and Lyme disease? These are just a few of the dozens of questions we'd like to explore in a conference.
Generally, if that all is being exposed, it can have to take so less than...
Lyme disease can destroy lives and has proven to be fatal. And yet some of our healthcare leaders still do not take it seriously.
There were also people who are getting help, and they were giving up. In some sense, sorry, and someone's reputation was at the death. Some died from MNS.
After four days, Lyme's narrative system, it was unmovable. It had no faith, it had no idea. How difficult can that be for this?
And when existing with the system is at certain circumstances?
I know as much or more than some of those physicians, and that I'm not respected. So how about the person who goes in with their minor symptoms, the achy body, the... I think they're just totally disoriented.
Despite dedicated researchers working hard to understand the disease and its carriers, few of their findings are reaching the health professionals for major diseases. Why is that?
I was involved in an international project this spring, which was essentially a massive review of the scientific literature, asking exactly that question.
Dr. Beth Boit is one of Hannah's leading researchers, and she is horrified by the number of tissue samples in her lab from people who have died from the disease, a disease that can be cured.
For the name, the test result doesn't necessarily mean you don't have Lyme disease. Doctors are not informed of that.
Please help us to expose the myths and mistakes that have contributed to this epidemic. We'll also explore a new idea to combat the disease.
So this effort is both collaborative and community-oriented. So far, we've made presentations at Mahone Bay, Lunenburg, Modal here, and Chester, and conferred with just about all, I think, of the recreational directors. Nobody seems to think that there isn't a problem. It's the how we address it. So there are other things that I think in the long run might come into play. One is tourism. The other is potentially the housing market. So there is a potential economic impact in all of this. So we're looking for funding, of course, and we're also looking for support. And that would be in-kind support. Help promoting. So, yes. Help promoting, help discussing with people who are -- it's not just the recreation directors. It's those people who are working in the field with utilities. It's -- I'm sure that you have a fair number of employees who are exposed to ticks and Lyme. So we need to find out where they're at with all of that and get them involved, I think. We are hoping to do a legacy project, which is potentially a video for young people, but about prevention. So that would be young people, young people for young people. So have the young people make it, so that they write it and they execute it, so that it has appeal to a certain age group. Everything that we've seen so far doesn't have high appeal. So I'll leave you with that and the request for funding and some help, some support.
Do you have a specific dollar amount in terms of funding that you're looking for?
We're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
We're just about there.
Okay. Good. Questions from members of council? I mean, I don't think you'd get any argument around this table that we know that it's an issue in this county. So we'll look forward to your official written request, and that'll be decided by council.
Do you have an actual grant application?
Yep.
You do?
Yes. Yep. So we'll -- yeah, we'll make sure you get that.
Okay. Thank you very much indeed for listening.
Thank you very much, Yvonne.
Thank you.
I see our next delegation is here. Mr. Gary Ramey is here to talk about the facade grant for his property. So welcome, sir. And the podium is yours, and you have 10 minutes to discuss your grant.
Thank you very much, Your Worship and council members. Thank you for seeing me on a fairly short notice, too. I'd also like to thank Jessica McDonald and Tammy. I've been doing some back and forth with them over the last little while. And I sent some correspondence through, and I didn't bring it because I don't want to read all that stuff. You've already received it, so there's no point in going through that again. Basically, what happened was I received an email from Mr. Peter Oikle saying that I had a facade grant for my property, 624 King Street. And so I was very pleased to get that. What I had done when I received the grant was I had kind of gone beyond a bit where I normally would have gone to do things to that building. And there were a couple of things I wanted to do. One was to replace the awning. The awning had been on there for 30 years and was starting to get ripped and torn. And also, I wanted to paint the front of the building. So in order to make it, you know, the way it should be, that's what I thought I had to do. I didn't get it done in time, and there was no timeframe on the email I got, but apparently the time ran out on it. And I got a letter from a Mr. Ken Young, who was, I think, on that committee as well. It was a letter, it had no return address. It just said, "We've revoked your grant." And so then I talked to Ms. McDonald and some people, and they said, "Well, you know, perhaps you could, you know, appeal it to council." And so I did. And then I got a letter from council saying that I could have the grant again, but it had -- the work had to be completed by the end of March. And mainly what I'm here to talk about and kind of get finished before the 10 minutes is why it's taken so long. Because that's -- that must be what you're thinking. What is the matter with you that you can't get this done? So what happened basically was this. I had a -- I could have gone to Matatol Signs in Halifax to get the awning. I think they wanted, at the time, 13,800 for the awning and the framing. And so I was looking for a slightly better deal, and I also prefer to shop locally. So I found out that the sale loft in Lunenburg, Stephen Sale Loft, would be able to produce this. It had to be custom-made. It's not a one-off where the framing is all-new and everything. The framing already existed, and the awning had to fit the framing that was on the building. So it had to be custom-made. So Michelle Stevens said she could do it. So I said, "Go ahead and make it." And it was supposed to be, I told Jessica, I was going to paint the front of the building a darker, it's light gray now, a slightly darker gray, and have the awning taupe, or sort of the color of those doors over there, or, you know, kind of an offish yellow. And when I got talking to Michelle, she said, "You better not do that, because it's a sombrero fabric, and it'll withstand the sun and all this other stuff." But what it won't be able to do is withstand a lot of diesel fumes and exhaust fumes, which will start to discolor it right off the bat. And there's no real good way to clean those. And in any event, you'd have to take it back off to do it. So then I thought, "Oh, God, well, I better not do that." So I picked the color that went with the gray, which was burgundy. Told her to go ahead and make it, but she's a sale loft, she owns a sale loft, and she makes sales. So when people are racing in the summer and they blow out a sale, they tell her to get another one, like Pronto, and those are her customers. So I got, I kept getting bumped, 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 and I understood why. Eventually, I did get the thing completed. I now have it. But when I took the framing off, a number of years ago, a purelator truck went by my building and was impacted by a car coming down Dominion Street. And the purelator truck was going north. And when the car impacted the purelator truck, he hit the awning framing four times, like just bump, 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 bump. And it's in, there's eight sections to it. So I had a guy come in and fix it on the building. When I took the awning framing off, though, it was in sorry shape. So I sent it to Atlantic Millwright, which is a company in Concoral, a game local company. He repaired it, but he said, "Don't put that bag on there like that, because it'll just rot off, and you're going to have problems. You should galvanize it, send it to Burnside." So I said, "Okay." So he sent it to Burnside, and then that took a considerable amount of time. Anyway, by the time everything was organized, I had missed my window. And so then what did we do? We tried to go around again. And this time, I have the awning, I have the framing, I'm ready to go, but I can't meet the, I can't pull off the March deadline. Two reasons for that. According to Michelle, it has to be 15 degrees centigrade to stretch the awning onto the framing to get a proper install. The second thing is, I want to paint the front of the building before I put the awning on. If I put the awning on, I then run into all kinds of problems putting staging up there, and I also run the risk of having paint drop on the brand-new awning. So I've got two issues there, and as a result, I can't meet the deadline that council said I had to meet in order to get this done. And I don't, I'm not expecting really anything from you. I don't know, I mean, I'm here talking about this after Lyme disease, so I feel, I even feel guilty for that. You know, because really, I mean, this is, we're not talking, we're not talking big stuff here. But I would like to, I would like to paint the front of the building. I also have to do some carpentry work. Those buildings have, if you know the building I'm talking about, it's a foot of Dominion Street. It's got a false front on it, part that sticks up above the rest of the building. And I've already looked up there, and I know, I know I've got rotten wood up there, and I don't want to, I don't want to paint rotten wood. So I want to, I talked to Mr. Hopkins about putting scaffolding up there, and I'm trying to get everything done at the same time. I'd like it painted twice. I'd like the carpentry work done and the awning put on. So I only put the, you know, because I'm going to disrupt, I am going to disrupt things down there. I already got a sleeve on the power line to protect workers, but I'm going to tie it up there for, I don't know, as soon as the temperature's right, it's probably going to be tied up for, I'm going to say, five to 10 days. And I did get impacted by a car in December, and I'm just getting that work finished now. Like, I mean, it's taken all this time because we've had, we've had, well, miserable weather. Not today, but most of the other days have been really quite awful. So they're still actually finishing up the work from that as well. So, I don't mean, that's my story. It's kind of a sad, lonely tale. It's taken way longer than it should have, and I, I don't know, I don't know how long, you know, council's willing to tolerate this kind of stuff. I don't know. It should have been done much faster. I'd be the first to admit that. Couldn't pull it off. Don't want to tie up any more of your time. I think that's pretty much it. That's why it's not done. If you have any questions, I'll answer them and move on.
Questions? Do you have a question? Counselor McDonald?
So what's the new deadline? Have we extended it?
I got to get to 15 degrees centigrade.
Are we talking June?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know what it's going to be like. If Mayweather was good, we could possibly pull it off. I don't trust that. I would say June, end of June, possibly. Maybe before. But I'm pretty sure that would, I think that would do it.
Yeah. Other questions? Counselor McDonald?
Does that affect our accounting, carrying that over into a future year, or is that a pretty simple?
It's a simple process.
It is? Okay, good.
We transfer to reserve.
Any other questions? So we don't generally, when there's a delegation, we generally reserve judgment for a future meeting. So that'll, decision will be made 25th of March unless council's prepared to deal with this tonight and pick a date.
I think we should deal with...
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion then to, with a new date, the new deadline.
Do you extend the deadline to June 30th?
June 30th? Do I have a secondary? Seconded by, we'll go with hands, Debbie Mary Tanner. Further discussion? Question's being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, June 30th.
I have to say, that's more than kind. I do appreciate that. I do appreciate the work of Tammy, and they have to listen to me more than you do, so...
Well, we're doing this for them.
Make it go away. Make it go away. Thank you very much, Your Worship. Thank you, council. I appreciate that, and it shall be done. We'll get her done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You have the minutes of February 25th, regular council meeting in your agenda package. Any questions, errors, or omissions? Hearing none. We will deem the minutes approved. Correspondents for information. Cap removal, interest in the pilot project. We know this is something going around the province. Does she want to speak to that?
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah. So the deadlines come and gone on this one in the sense that they were looking for feedback by December 21st. But they have contacted us since then to ask if our council would be interested in this and to kind of get the feeling from Bridgewater Council in terms of a pilot. If you remember, at the NSFM conference this fall, there was a suggestion put forth that there be pilot municipalities that would look at how to phase in the removal of the cap and the implications for that, that they would be the test for that. So they're asking if municipalities would be interested. And so it's here, as I said, because they keep, they do contact and ask what would be our position on that. And I know that from past conversations, there was some concern raised by council with respects to looking at the cap and isolation of the entire assessment system and how that works itself. So that was expressed to them, but it would be good to get kind of a formal response from council to them.
Any questions on that? Talk to me, Counselor Thorburn, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I guess my main concern is how much would impact our staff, and do we have the capacity to do this pilot project? Because I would certainly support doing it if we did. Or could.
Other questions? Do we need more information on that? I think it's, this thing's been kicked around by municipalities. We know it's an issue, but the issue is how do you address it? You can't just look at it in isolation, as CIO said. So you're looking to find out if we're interested in participating in the pilot?
Do you want to be a pilot? Yeah.
So do you want more information before...
There's certainly going to come to council and give a presentation if you'd like to have that.
Do you want, yeah? Counselor McDonald?
I would like to understand the full impact of being part of a pilot.
Okay.
I agree. Yeah, I think more information would be helpful, just to get a full understanding of what it entails and what's expected.
Okay. So why don't we ask if they'll come down and do a presentation, and then we can be armed with more information to make a decision? Does that sound good to everyone? Okay. Thank you. No need for a motion on that one. Okay. Next item is the conveyance of two streets in Old Town Hills. This has been an item that has been coming for quite some time. So just for the members of the general public, we have the Old Town Hills development off of High Street there has been in the works for quite some time. And so what we have before us is a motion to rename the two streets, or to actually take over the streets and name them. So if someone is prepared to make that motion, Counselor Thorburn? Using the microphone, please.
Yeah, I would say move that the town council accept the deeds for the two posted public streets as described in document 19-004 revised, and that council endorse the recommendation of that Heritage Advisory Committee, that Street B on the plan of survey be named Heckman Avenue Street, and A on plan of survey to be named Jerry Byers Drive.
Got a secondary, please. Counselor Fager, discussion?
The only comment I'd make is I propose that you name it Jerry Byers Drive, he was a golf pro.
Yes. I did, I did catch that, the drive. Counselor Graves?
So why do we want to own this, these properties, the streets? There's no houses on there now. They're not generating any tax revenue.
We have to own them.
We have to?
In order...
For subdividing, right?
For subdivision purposes. And you can only subdivide on a public street. So that is part of our requirements in our subdivision by law.
Okay. So we have a motion. Any further questions or comments? No? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. So the next one is King Street Parking Alternatives. So there's a document there. And then I'm going to suggest that if we have questions for staff, that maybe staff go to the podium where there's a microphone, because I know that's everyone's favorite thing. So this is something that's come forward to various members of council, from members of the public, just questions. Of course, we have everyone's favorite reverse angle parking. We've had questions about parking meters and things like that. But the big one is, of course, with the change in parking to reverse angle parking. People have asked us a number of times to look at alternatives. So that's what's in front of us. I don't know if, we'll start with questions, or you've had, did you want to jump right in?
Either or.
Okay. Well, you know, Larry, why don't you, if you had something prepared, why don't you go with that?
Sure.
Okay, perfect.
During the design phase of King Street...
During the design phase of King Street upgrades, the consultant reviewed a number of different parking options. Parallel parking, perpendicular parking, head-in-angle parking and back-in-angle parking. Of course, each type of parking has its advantages and disadvantages as outlined in the report. So parking options going forward could be status quo. In other words, no change to the current style of parking on King Street. Parking could be removed. I don't think that's the wishes at this point. So we didn't actually investigate that any further. Or to change the style of parking to one of the other styles that were outlined in the report. Staff anticipate that if parking configuration was to change, that the consultant would most likely recommend parallel parking. And this would result in a decreased number of parking stalls. There's about 11 back-in-angle parking now. We anticipate it probably be about seven. And that any changes would need to be budgeted for.
Okay. Questions? I know it's, nobody wants to talk about. I will say that, that the, the question I get the most is why don't you go back to parallel parking? And when I do try to explain to people that reverse angle parking is 75% parallel parking without the final last turn, it does kind of make them contemplate why they can't do the back end. So they generally start with, people are behind me too close and I can't back up. That problem is not, parallel parking does not solve that problem because you still have that first step of backing in. But as I said, and then it generally ends with the people I talk to say, well, I haven't actually tried the parking. So I think, in my, my thought is that even though it's been a couple of years, we still have not, people still have not gotten used to it because there hasn't been the effort to try. And so I'm concerned about, and I'm just speaking for myself, concerned about any reductions in parking to accommodate some misconceptions, again, that if we go to parallel, you'll be able to back up if you already have that problem or that it's easier. So I'm just, I'm a little hesitant to change, even though it's two years, I don't think it's enough time. But, Councilor McInnes, you have the microphone in your hand, so.
I do, and I, I feel not qualified to talk on this subject because I vote against the parking, whole total parking package. But anyone I talk to who visit King Street would rather drive in on an angle and back out as opposed to backing in. And it's a lot easier to back out than to back in. I know it's higher risk and there won't be a policeman in the country would agree with me with what I'm saying. But I'm telling you that there are people avoiding King Street because they, if they have to back in on that, that particular part of the King Street. It doesn't work for them. And, uh, so it's a tough question to answer because you're never going to satisfy everyone. It's just, just not going to happen. And maybe people will get used to it. But I know I, I remember last summer when the concerts were on down on Pichunuska Park. Uh, I tried twice to put back in. The person was right on my tail. I couldn't, I couldn't stop to back in. And that's happening a lot and that's just the way it is. Uh, now, the question I have, have we considered reducing the speed limit on that area?
We haven't, um, considered posting regulated speed limits that's less than 50, but the actual design of King Street was designed to narrow, to decrease the speed of the traffic.
That's an interesting question.
Yeah, no, no.
Deputy Mayor Tanner? You have to use the microphone. Our, our audience wants to hear what you have to say. I'm assuming up is on.
Yeah, up is on.
Up is on, okay. Uh, you know, reducing the speed limit, it's still not going to stop those drivers that are right on your tail. Um, so you're, you're not going to fix that problem. Uh, this document that was supplied has the pros and cons of each. Uh, today, uh, I counted nine vehicles that were parked perfectly in those areas. And I continue to drive through and try and keep track of how people are managing there. I don't doubt it's, um, difficult for some people. You know, until you try it, it's, it's different and it's new. And I did just read a quick article that the city of Freherton is switching some of their parking to back-in-angle parking as well. So they'll have the same struggles perhaps that we are, but we'll see how that progresses. Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, I agree with Andrew and the mayor. Uh, I've been down there numerous times and there seem to be vehicles in those parking spots. And, uh, maybe some more signage to increase awareness, some politeness of the drivers to stop and give you time. I went back there, down there one night just to back in and try it and it was just as easy as pie. It's not that hard. You got to double the width. And once you start back in, even building back in that spot.
I knew that was coming. Councilor McDonald, the, Councilor Graves, you can just pass the microphone. Thank you.
It's, uh, my, my feeling that reversing seems to be the issue. Because in pull-in parking, I can't tell you how many times I see people pull through so that they can avoid ever having to back up. Um, if it's a fear, then maybe there's, there's some sort of driving academy that we need in town if, if people are really concerned about backing up their vehicles. Um, because that's, that's a real concern. If people are concerned about that, there are a lot of places in town where you need to back up. Um, and following too closely is an issue that is a driver issue. It's not an issue with parking. Maybe we need some bumper stickers or something creative and cheeky to, to tell people to get off, get off my tail. Um, but that's a driver's issue and it's, it's one that people, I think, need to become aware of. And again, another habit that we need to create, uh, we need to get used to, to, to give people some space, give a little bit of distance where we shouldn't be in such a hurry all the time that we're, we're right up against the next car because you, it's a potential for accidents too. So I think the, the education, you know, we really have to just keep pumping it and building some habits.
Is there, going back to Councilor Thorburn's, uh, and a little bit to Councilor McDonald's, uh, statement about signage, is there a benefit of having a sign on the old bridge and a sign further up King Street? Um, so before you get to those reverse angle parkings, that parking spots, to say, uh, like, remember to leave space for those attempting to park or something. There's, I feel like there's got to be a, a sign with like two cars too close that say, you know, leave space or something that we can kind of remind people.
I'm not aware of any regulatory sign for that.
Let's make our own one, though.
But as far as an information sign, perhaps, I, I, I guess as part of the education program, the Nova Scotia's Driver's Handbook does suggest when parallel parking to stop before you actually have to park to force the car behind you to stop early. So, you know, they are also reaching out, I guess, and trying to educate perhaps maybe the younger generation. But there is, you know, there are some efforts for education that way as well.
So I think going back to this and when I, and I, I read the pros and cons of each, the issue really isn't the reverse angle design. It's that it's a combination of it being new and different. And we're not used to that. And sometimes that is enough to say, for some people to say, well, I'm not going to shop in a certain area. And I don't know how to get past that. Just, I don't know how, how you can just say to somebody that, you know, the spaces are 150% wider than a regular space. There's lots of room. Backing in makes it so that you can drive out into traffic versus, because I, I hear that what you're saying, Councilor McInnes, people would rather back into traffic. But the thought of backing into traffic versus backing up where there's no worry of traffic. I mean, the, the logic is flawed, but I hear that, I hear the same argument you're hearing. So it's kind of, I don't know what to do with this one. Councilor Fager?
Yeah, and it, it's a difficult one because I, you know, I myself have tried and there has been times when, as you mentioned, that the driver behind you isn't courteous enough and it intimidates drivers. And I've listened to some merchants on King Street who feel that their customers, don't want to choose to do the back-in-angle parking. So for them, it's a concern for business when, when their customers choose not or not comfortable with the back-in-angle parking. So I, I think it's, again, it's a mindset and whether we're comfortable doing it. Some maybe not choose to do it and prefer the parallel parking. Um, I guess it's what, what we're most familiar with and what we're most comfortable with at the end of the day. And right now, I know there's not a lot of merchants right in that area strip where there are parallel, sorry, back-in-angle parking. So it's, I think, I think their voice is important to hear, um, when we're, when we're discussing it. And, and I know staff have heard, um, from the various businesses on King Street as well.
Councilor McDonald?
I think we also have to look at the parking as an overall picture. The reverse angle parkings are, parking spaces are how many of a total?
11.
11 of, there's just quite a number of them down there. If you're not comfortable with reverse angle parking, it is a very short walk to another alternative, whether it's pull-in parking or parallel parking or a parking lot just down the street. It's not a long walk. I know there, there are some, um, customers who aren't able to walk long distances. And I understand that it's not going to be a perfect solution for everyone. Uh, but for the majority of us, if somebody's too close or you're not comfortable with that type of parking, you go two seconds down the street and you've got another option. So I think you have to look at the entire makeup, which gives you every option you could possibly want or be comfortable with. So I think it's got to be an overall. You can't just pick, you know, one tiny portion of the parking and say that, that parking downtown doesn't work.
Is Phoenix Street wide enough that if it became a two-way street, you could go down King, turn right on Phoenix and do pull-in angle parking going up the street and down the street? Or some kind of parking on, even if there was just parking on one side of the street, but it was a two-way street? So that people going along King could turn right and go up?
If, yeah, Phoenix wouldn't be wide enough. And also there's issues with the intersection of Pleasant Street. That's why.
Right, okay. Just thinking, as Councilor McDonald's talking about all the alternatives, of, of course, Phoenix Street, you can come down and park and those are drive-in spaces. And then parallel the next block down. Yes, Councilor Thorburn?
Just, just one thing, and Larry kind of hit home, was like, taking some defensive driving courses and they teach you to stop a car in the back. But I like your idea of, of stopping short of where you're planning to stop. That will make the car behind you stop and then proceed ahead and then back in. And it makes a lot of sense. So public education still has to be key here on that.
So I think, and, and there's, there's a lot of value in receiving this document. Like, we are listening to people and, and I'm with Councilor Fager. When you, when you go into especially certain merchants, they will tell you that, that they have customers that just cannot get the hang of it. And so it is affecting their business. So I think the first step is, we did take some action to ask for some alternatives. I think out of this discussion, there should be some education component that either we push out on social media. I don't know if we need to buy ads in the, in the local paper. Uh, if we need to talk to, um, the province and how they push out their, their, their standards for driver training to get the public, because I do like the idea of stopping sooner and then you move forward. I know a few times that the car in front of me has not put on their right turn signal when they're going to park. So they just literally stop and then I can't figure out why they're stopping in the middle of the street. And then it's because they wanted then back up, but there's no signal. So I think there's, there's more work to do. Um, that's why there was no motion in this package. It's not to, to vote on one of these changes. It's to bring this topic forward. I would encourage us to continue to talk to the public and to the, to the businesses to see what else we can do. And I, I would like to see if there is some kind of signage or something that other communities are using. We can't be the only ones that have, even those that have parallel parking issues. There's got to be someone who has a sign or something designed to, to tell people to leave space or something like that. I don't know why in my head I can picture a sign that says leave space or something, but maybe I'm thinking of a subway that says mind the gap. I don't, I don't know. More discussion on this? Is there anything else that council would like on this topic for information? Do we need more from Larry? Because he doesn't want to leave the podium. He wants to be there as long as he can. No? Everyone's, Councilor Thorburn, I knew you had something.
And I think the reality is that there really is very little difference in angle parking and back-in parking except for the name. The vehicles behind you have to leave you room to do either. So it's not just one thing or the other. It's driver courtesy.
Councilor McInnes?
Yeah, getting back to what you said about signage, there's a bump oat just in front of the Thai restaurant. If you had a sign there that says caution, back-end parking?
We, we can explore options if there's something that some other, you know, uh, unit is using or something. We can explore.
Or leave space, back-in parking, something like that? I mean, for the cost of a sign, if a sign was a hundred dollars or $200, if we tried that for six months and it had zero effect, it would be better value for money than going and making changes and finding out that those changes also had zero effect, but we just spent 20 or $30,000 cutting concrete and moving. Yeah, does that sound like a good idea? We'll just maybe investigate some options of, of signage or something? Further questions? Okay, thank you. All right, next item is, uh, I see our deputy chief is here to discuss preapproval of patrol, police patrol vehicles. This is going to be a great opportunity to educate the thousands of people watching, no pressure, but the thousands of people watching. Uh, because we had this discussion as council was going through some capital items and trying to explain to them that the first issue that we have now, and the public should know this, is that there's only one company that makes a police car now. And that's Dodge. And if you want a police car to meet our standards, it's a big Hemi V8 that Ford doesn't make cars. And so this is part of our education for the public, that when they see an SUV, that it's not that we all want to drive SUVs. It's that we've now been left with no options.
Yes, for sure, yeah.
I'll let you just basically repeat what I said.
So, yeah, so, so last year was the last year that Ford made their Taurus Interceptor package. So that's a police, uh, police-approved package. So, uh, 2018 was the last year for that. Um, they told us last year when we got our last vehicle that that was the last of the assembly line. So we kind of started working towards figuring out what other prices could be, what other vehicles would be out there. And then, um, you know, to look for preapproval, obviously, for now. So, uh, I guess the main thing is there's only so many companies in North America that make police vehicles so that they're graded for police work, patrol work especially, like our plainclothes vehicle or GIS vehicles. That can be whatever because it's not responding to emergency calls. So it doesn't have to have the same equipment, obviously. So, um, there's basically, Chevy now has vans, trucks. Um, a Tahoe is just a really big SUV. Dodge has the, um, Charger, but it's an all-wheel-drive Hemi, uh, which I don't think really would be appropriate in a town that the maximum speed limit is 50. Doesn't make a lot of sense for us. Um, they do have a Durango option. And then Ford is making, um, basically an Explorer option. So that's what they're making as well as a, as a, a truck, an F-150, which again, I don't think is really appropriate for our community. So, uh, those are really where we're standing for options. Why, um, that's why our cost has gone up. Um, they're not the same price as what the interceptors were, the Ford Toruses. And on top of it, um, that's, was our entire fleet was Ford interceptors. So anything we get for a new vehicle would have to be a different size. So the silent partners or partitions in between, you know, the backseat where our client would be in, um, would not fit in any other vehicle. It's, they're made specific for those size. Most of our light bars, um, computer monitors, firearm racks, a lot of that can be moved into the other vehicles and we recycle them pretty consistently. But, um, but the partition for sure would not fit and possibly the light bar depending on what we get.
Okay. So questions from council? I mean, we, we hang on to these police cars as long as we can, but we're at the end of life for those. Councilor McDonald?
I think it's also kind of important to note the amount of equipment that you have to carry in your vehicles at this point and how much space that takes in a vehicle.
Uh, 100%. So a lot of our equipment, especially this time of year, uh, it only works in certain temperatures. So like our diffusator will only work if it's in room temperature. So, uh, night set is minus eight. We have to bring it to the front seat or bring it in the office so that it's able and capable to when we have to, you know, if we ever have to use it, which we have. Um, our approved screening devices, again, that's a temperature-specific tool. So we have to keep that up front. A lot of our cameras, digital cameras, uh, digital audio recorder, um, that also won't work if it's in the trunk. So a lot of that stuff we've moved forward. Again, I don't know. Again, I don't know anybody that's ever gone on a ride-along, anybody's welcome, we've offered that out as many times as we can. We've put computer monitors in the car to keep the guys on the road as much as possible. That's very small space, once you put two average-sized people and a computer monitor and our equipment on top of it. So the SUV would give us a lot more space, for sure, especially, again, for if we have anybody in custody. If you've seen the space, there's about, there's less than a foot in foot space in between that partition and the backseat. So it's quite difficult to get people inside, especially when they don't want to at times.
Who wouldn't want to be in the back of a police car? Counsel Graves.
What are other police forces doing in terms of vehicles?
So we met with the town chiefs for the other units our size in Truro two weeks ago. Some of them are actually going to full-size trucks. That, again, would carry more of the equipment, but you wouldn't have the ability to put anybody in custody in it. I've seen that some have gone to Chargers with the full-size Hemi, but those are in areas that they've had actual traffic units, so we don't have that. And then mostly, I've seen is SUVs. So the Durangos, I've seen more than anything.
Yeah, just to expand on that, I did reach out to the urban mayors and what they were purchasing. So similar-sized towns for us, there's a couple that are actually going to the Ford F-150, like, they're buying pickup trucks, and again, and the V8 cars, so it's, those are the two that I would agree with the deputy chief to say, those are not appropriate vehicles. You're not right sizing your vehicle for this community, and then so you're narrowing it down to just your two SUV.
And then you can't recycle equipment either. If you're having multiple different vehicles in your fleet, like, you're not recycling any of the gear, it's not getting more shelf life.
Yeah, you have a follow-up question?
Just thinking, we're 13 kilometers, 13 square kilometers, so what would Toronto do, or Vancouver, where they tend to be neighborhood units?
Four vehicles? I'm really not sure. The last time I talked to anybody from Toronto would have been last year, and I know they have a fair amount of SUVs. And then the, sorry, the Taurus, four Taurus was still available then, so I don't know if they really explored it, but I could reach out.
So we know that when the Crown Vics were discontinued, large cities like New York, for example, bought 10,000, and then just put them in an airfield, and then as their cars died, they had years of supply sitting there.
And the RCMP did that federally with us. They had a large amount of Crown Vics in St. John's.
So can you check with places like Toronto and some of the larger cities?
Yeah, we can reach out to them.
Counsel McDonald.
Is it reasonable to expect that expenses like fuel and tires and some of those things are going to increase in the budget?
Yes, and we actually put an increase in the budget for fuel, and I believe maintenance. So that, we did put an increase. And we've been running a Durango for our K9 vehicle for the last year, so we basically base that all off the costs that we were using for that vehicle.
More questions? I would love a motion if you'd like to put one on the floor, please.
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater pre-approve a 2019 capital project for two police patrol vehicles in the amount of $95,000.
Have a second here, please. Counsel McDonald. Just because the question was asked about the increased costs, and I saw some chuckling over here, we're talking about increased costs. The Police Commission did pass their annual budget at the last meeting, and if you recall, last year was, direction was given from counsel to reduce, for the commission to reduce that budget to a level that was quite aggressively reduced. And so, you know, this will come to this council to be added to ours, but I will say that with quite a bit of pride, that this year's budget for police is less than last year's budget. So even with some increases and pressures, they've continued to chip away and be able to find some more efficiencies, and so the budget that you will see is less than last year's. So just wanted to point that out. Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And I think we'll need to continue to educate the public when they see a few more SUVs driving around, that, again, we would have preferred to continue to buy the Ford Taurus, but that option was removed from us. Policy 57, Low Income Tax Exemption. So this is for amendments to that, and I don't know if there's a presentation, or it's just straightforward?
The MGA requires that we give notice of a policy change coming, so we will be...
Okay, so is someone prepared to make this motion? Counsel Fager?
The Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act, that at the March 25, 2019 council meeting, amendments to Policy 57, Low Income Tax Exemption, will be discussed to consider revisions to income threshold amounts.
Thank you. Can I have a second here, please? Deputy Mayor Tanner, further discussion? Looking forward to that, coming back. Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is, Bridgewater Tennis Club Relocation and Generations Active Park Conceptual Plan. We have a...
No.
No, nothing on the screen?
No.
Okay.
Unless, Amanda, you could bring up the concept plan. I didn't prepare that.
You have in your council packages a report. The Bridgewater Tennis Club came before you in October, asking about relocating to the Generations Active Park, and you referred the matter to staff for a report on the potential location and cost. So the report you received went through, we found we couldn't report just on the tennis club relocation without actually looking at the Generations Active Park concept plan overall. In 2011, council endorsed the Generations Active Park Plan, Master Plan, and that included a concept for the overall park. And to date, we've completed the dog park and many recreational trails, but not many of the other features. So with some of the items that have come forward in the past few years, Bridgewater Tennis Club included, it was prudent for us to take a look at what was included in that concept plan. So it is, I believe, the last page of the report, if you need to pull it up on the screens that are directly in front of you. So...
It's okay.
It's fine. They have it, yeah. Sorry, I wasn't thinking about that with all the changes of coming to the museum. So the, we looked at the, in terms of the Bridgewater Tennis Club, there's really only three options in town of where the tennis club could be. Its current location at Kinsman Field, possibly at the LCLC, there was some discussion a couple of years ago, or really, Generations Active Park is an excellent location. The original concept plan did include multi-use courts, and so hadn't considered tennis in and of itself. But we took a look at what was there, we've taken a look at the conversations that have happened in the community, and some of the costs associated with some of the elements within the original concept plan, and propose what's in front of you. So what's in, it differs from the original concept in that there's no artificial turf considered at that location. It's a difficult and would be a very expensive option. Drainage, I believe, is one of the main challenges, as well as just the cost of an artificial turf. And the multi-use courts have been replaced with three standalone tennis courts, as well as a basketball court. There's scaled-back pavilion and entrance area, or entrance plaza, scaled-back parking lot, but we believe, because the off-season for HB Studios would coincide with sort of peak season for use of the park, with all the elements presented there in the concept plan, so that there'd be more than enough parking to accommodate, except for the odd time where there may be a special event. And then also, play space. In the original concept, it talks about a natural playground, but actually, what our community really needs is an accessible playground in conjunction with splash pad, so that is what's proposed in the concept in front of you. So the report is, we've put in some very rough costs and potential phasing for acting on the concept, the elements within the concept plan for Generations Active Park. And I believe there's a recommendation that council endorsed this new concept plan for Generations Active Park, which includes the tennis club. So there's no immediate impact on the 2019, 2020 capital budget, because we would need that year to really do the detailed planning for where everything would go, and time to get funding together for applying for, for bringing forward the tennis courts and parking area, I believe, around the first phase. Sorry, I only have it on my laptop, so I'd have to run over and grab it. Any further questions?
Questions from members of counsel? Counsel Thorburn?
I've got it on my computer, Jessica. Anyway, I see there's not much for the 19, 2020 budget, but the tennis court looks like in 2021, and I believe there's an opportunity to partnership with the Bridgewater Tennis Club, certainly provincial and federal funds out there, similar to what we try to do with our skate park. And I think it's important that the tennis club has a significant influence in the residence of town of Bridgewater, and we should proceed those partnerships, and maybe get this offer money in our next year's budget. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
We're only here for like, eight weeks.
I know, I know. Jessica, a year or two ago, we had a presentation from some young volleyball players, asking for an outdoor court and so on, and I'm, and I know we obviously have a tennis court in town, the surface of those three courts, one isn't in the best of shape, but they're playable and they're usable. So given that we already have a tennis court, why wouldn't an outdoor volleyball court be a higher priority in the phasing in, just out of curiosity?
That is a good question. We did talk about it at the Parks Recreation and Culture Committee, and so we did reconfigure the concept that was presented at that committee to the version that you see here, to ensure that the volleyball was included. We haven't had detailed discussion with you yet around whether that's what's been proposed, or three competition-size courts, which was the request of the delegation to council. And I guess really, the tennis club is looking to move for a variety of reasons which they outlined when they came to council in October, and drainage and a few things are issue with where they are currently located.
Sorry, Counsel McDonald, yes. Counsel Graves, if you mind, you're on microphone duty, Michael.
I think we'd also talked about the clubhouse at the tennis courts being very important for the future developments, which makes a lot of sense, that clubhouse is kind of a, clubhouse and pavilion is a really central point, that will be really important for the use in the other features. I wanted, I just wanted to comment that I'm on the Parks and Rec Advisory, so I've seen this plan, and I think that this is a real draw to the community. This is a place that I can see families, and seniors, and young adults, and just everyone spending a lot of time. And I think we've started the ball rolling, and it's really nice to see some momentum continuing, but going back and re-looking at it and making sure that it addresses the needs and the desires that we've heard from the community. So I think it's a really nice-looking plan, there are partnerships out there, but certainly we need to know that some of those partnerships are, can go in the direction we need them to, that they have access to some funding, because this is a big bill that can't, I don't think that we can bear the full cost, so the partnerships are really key. And I know that the Director of Planning, Recreation, Recreation Planning and everything...
That's what says in her card.
Was definitely open to those, those conversations, and knew that those would be very important as well, so those partnerships, I think, are really key.
So safe to say that if counsel was to tonight endorse the concept plan as presented, it does not tie us to the phases as they are outlined. So as long as the components and the general idea is appealing to counsel, if, say, volleyball was to come forward and was really the new priority, because we've had a request to counsel, it is a growing sport, I believe, especially in this community. We know that they must travel for beach volleyball outside this community if they're going to compete, and we want to keep them here, that would, that would make that rise to the top. And I would argue that, just like if tennis was not able to maintain its membership, or come to the table with some funding for their portion, that might push that to a future year, depending on, you know, the demands of tennis, demands from the community and things like that. So I think it's just, to the point that you're making about why we're not bringing some things forward, the phasing part, we would have to, that's a budget item, we'd have to discuss that, but the concept of the contents is probably... Counsel Thorburn first, and then Counsel Graves.
I think it's forward, it's important that going forward, we look at things in a different perspective, because Bridgewater has a lot of regional facilities, so I think these costs should be shared by the people that use them, and not more entirely by the residents of town of Bridgewater. And I think Generations Active Park has an opportunity to do that. It certainly does it with the dog park. Just go over there and see where the cars are from.
I can, I can hear the choir you're preaching to. You're absolutely right. Counsel Graves?
I agree with Counsel Thorburn. Looking at the phases, the tennis court and the basketball court, they're probably the same surfaces, and they're, and they're not?
No. The tennis club is proposing a clay tech surface, so it's not a, it's not a hard court like it is down at Kinsman Field. It's a softer court, it is an engineered material, I'm looking over at Larry, but it is, so it plays like a clay tennis court, so it is softer and slower, better for all ages and abilities of tennis, and that's what they're pitching as to be the surface for the tennis courts, so it wouldn't... But maybe not all of them would need to be that clay tech surface, there would be room to discuss that with the tennis club.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel McDonald?
I feel like I'm doing a lot of talking today. I would move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, endorse the revised conceptual plan for Generations Active Park, including relocation of the Bridgewater Tennis Club as outlined in Document 18-146A, and refer the projects to budget deliberations.
Thank you. Second here, please. Counsel Thorburn, further discussion? Hearing none. Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 620, 626 King Street, report regarding requested protection barrier. Mr. Feener, you're back up, paging Mr. Feener. There's a Ferrsfield thing in there somewhere. Feener? Feener? Sorry. Sorry.
Thank you. Excuse me. The 2014 staff report provided information regarding the request for a barrier, historic frequency of accidents, potential types of barriers, along with their advantages and disadvantages, and options for consideration, including a properly-designed barrier, and also to make Dominion Street one-way or to make no changes. The recommendation at that time was status quo and to monitor the intersection. Since that time, there was one recorded accident that resulted in damage to the building, and this is a total of five accidents in this intersection over the last 31 years. The February 2019 staff report also provides updated information on the traffic volumes. They've increased somewhat, from about 1,300 vehicles a day to just over 1,800 vehicles a day. We also provide information on the recorded accidents throughout town for 2018, and also some information around when the park on King Street was upgraded. There are some bollards at the bottom of Phoenix Street as part of that upgrade project, and there's some rationale around why those were put there.
So you have the information. Are there any questions? Do we need more information? Yes, Counsel Graves?
So with that, with Dominion Street being rebuilt between Pleasant and King, is there anything that can be done to the surface to make it safer, so to speak? You know, in terms of, in terms of slippery weather, or ice, or snow, is there anything?
There's really no opportunity to change the grade. The grade is steep, certainly more than the 8% that we would like to see. It's going to be asphalt, or that's at least what the budget is intended for, or budgeted for is asphalt surface. So there was no proposed changes of the surface for Dominion Street in the, in the capital budget.
And there's nothing possible? There may be some technology out there that we don't know?
Yeah, I mean, part of the, you know, the accident reports... Yeah, I mean, part of the, you know, the accident reports contain some information, but there may be other variables that have contributed to the accidents. We don't know, some were medical conditions, some certainly were, at least the condition of the road at the time would have been a factor, but there may have been other factors that weren't necessarily picked up or recorded on. You know, we don't know if it's driver inattention, whether they had appropriate tires, and whether there were, like, there may be more than just one factor as far as the condition of the road at the time.
Going to Council Graves' question about, you know, something, what could we do to make it more traction, maybe? And I know that nobody's a fan of chip seal here, but when we do, when we repave a road, but what I recall is, when I, when my house was at the end of Alexandra, that extension was done with chip seal. And I found, as someone having to go up that hill every day, I had an easier time, because that road is a little rougher, that I always found that I had more grip, because it wasn't a smooth surface. And while we normally associate chip seal with a cheaper way to do a road, I, like I said, I always found that it, because it was a little granier, a little bumpier, there was a better opportunity for traction, and I just wonder if that, maybe that's in my head, but is that an option? I know it only helps for a few years until it smooths out, but.
Yeah, I guess my only concern potentially with that would be the steeper grades and whether that would, you know, move, especially in the warmer weather.
Because it is kind of a floating.
It does move, especially in hot weather.
Council Thorburn?
I'm like Jennifer, I seem to be talking a lot tonight, but this is where I go along with Michael. Would that be an opportune place to have a concrete slab board coming down that hill? Would certainly be rougher, and try that. It may be better than just having asphalt, which seemed to be slipperier.
I think if that's council's wishes, would be to explore other options. I'd like to research that before, you know, before we commit to something.
So maybe that's a good, if, I mean, if there's a possibility to research what other people are doing in slippery conditions, if there is a way to make a road grippier, and maybe the answer is there's not, but it certainly would be, it would be interesting information for council, especially as we go forward and start doing more work on roads.
I mean, steep grades are not uncommon, and I don't recall seeing any other different type of surface anywhere that I've been for those steep grades, but.
Even if you just, you could just, you know, reach out to maybe some of your cohorts?
And also, just in regards to Dominion, you'll be rebuilding the sidewalk as well, so there may be options to make that sidewalk grippier as well?
The sidewalk will be concrete to match the rest of Dominion Street.
Yeah, but you can put textured concrete. Wouldn't that provide more of a grip than?
They do broom finish, so there is a bit of a.
Council McDonald?
See, if you're putting up some sort of barrier there, we would lose part of the sidewalk area for pedestrians, is that correct?
Potentially. It is very narrow. I think it's only around four and a half feet, and the travel lane is not that wide. So exactly where that barrier would be would depend on the type of barrier and the size of the barrier, and whether we'd actually have space for something.
And the plans for the, the future plans for the sidewalk don't anticipate any, getting any bigger?
In front of this property? No, not, there's no plan for widening.
And, sorry, can I?
Yep.
And that impacts snow clearing as well? The sidewalk plowed can't fit in there if there are barriers?
That's correct.
Okay.
Further questions? So the recommendation is status quo, which doesn't really require a motion, because they're not changing anything, unless someone has anything further to bring forward on that, then we will advise Mr. Rainey that we are continuing with status quo. No, we're good? Okay. Unless there's any other business to bring before council, we have an in-camera meeting after, and motion to adjourn, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner, Council Fager, we are adjourned. Thank you.